Just sent a text to Melody. Steve, you have us out on the Acanta Facebook page, correct?
Yep, we are out there.
All right, Mel's hopping on, she said, she'll be right here. We'll give Mel another couple of minutes to try and get in here quick, like.
There's Mel.
Waiting for her to get her microphone up and running. Still don't see a microphone up for Mel yet. Melody says she's trying to get connected to the audio. This should make Jody and Steve Howard happy that, you know, someone else has the same issues. Steve, would it be best for her to get out, Mr. D, and have her re-enter? What do you think?
Possibly, possibly. She's also texting me. Let me see. I'll call her real quick.
All right.
See if I can walk her through it.
Well, you got sound now?
I think we figured it out. Test your mic too, Melody, if you don't mind.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, thanks, guys. Sorry about that.
You're all right. Good evening, everybody. It is 6:37 and I will bring the Shawto City Council meeting of July 21st, 2020 to order via Zoom. Ten participants tonight, myself as the mayor, Steve Diaco's council member, Melie Martinson from the Acanta, Steve Howard, council member, Jeff Hindoing, civil city attorney, Jody Rogers, finance officer, the Lewis family, which I'm taking as Kurt and Lonnie, and utility clerk Tom Froum Felder. Before you, I have the minutes from, you have the minutes from the meeting from July 20, no, tonight is July 21st, so that would be the minutes of July 7th. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I would so move.
Second.
The second was Councilman Major.
Who was my first?
Steve was.
I have a motion to accept them and I have a second. Any discussions or corrections? Hearing none? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they will be approved. Anyone going to be out of state?
Nope.
I won't be out of state, but I will be at summer camp the first week of August, so I will not, well, I may be in attendance, but I cannot guarantee it.
So you're talking third, three through seven?
Yes, second through eighth, actually, but yes.
All right.
And I am out of town next week. I'm not out of state, but I won't miss a meeting. I should be back Saturday.
We can text you if we had to?
Yep. It might take me a while to respond. I don't get service in the cafeteria, but you will hear from me daily if you need to.
Okey dokey. I am, I believe I'm around, unless I'm going to Eastern Montana, a little more later. Okay.
Our next meeting?
Our next meeting will be August 4th and it too will be by Zoom, you guys.
Okay.
We have unfinished business as the next agenda item and there is none, and there is no new business. And I'm putting this out here, you guys, because we're going to change the way we've kind of done things. We will do the majority of our business best as possible during the first meeting of the month, and during the second meeting month, we will do our reports, and I have reached out to all the people that are listed on here to have a report for us on a monthly basis. They've all reached out and asked for questions and kind of an idea what they wanted, and as we walk through this, we'll go, so. There is no new business before us, so we will hop right into the reports. And in your package, you will see the, there's a cover sheet with the summation, some, you know, we summarized all the reports, and then the reports that will follow it. So for the law enforcement, they will always be 30 days behind us because the way that they're doing their calendar work, it will be, this one happens to be from 6/1/2020 to 6/30/2020. Within the city limits, there was 52 calls for service, and there were three arrests made during that period of time. Our city judge has sent over his, their report, and they're going to be similar to the same way, they'll be a couple of days behind a funkier reporting period. So this period is from 7, July 1 to July 20th. There's one case pending on the docket, and they've collected $1,035 in receipts from four cases, both criminal and tickets, and their next report will be from 7/20/20, 7/21/20 to 8/18.
I have a question on that, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at this report. That's, this is the report with the 1,035, said accurate. And it says at the top Fairfield City Court? Is that just a virtue of the system, or?
It's a virtue.
Yeah.
We're working with the Supreme Court people in Helena to get it fixed. All our reports come with Fairfield alone.
Thank you.
But it's strange because I can get the same report from the Supreme Court folks, and it comes with Shawto on it. So it's just a clerical thing. Well, I'll work with Gail and them to get that straightened out. On the criminal side, for our city attorney, Jen is in court all week and wasn't able to prepare a report. I didn't actually get her chance to ask her for one until Friday in a format that we talked about where she'd be comfortable in providing that kind of information. So she said she will have one for us at our next meeting and keep us current in what's going on. Case that we are waiting for right now is the, the case for the Ed Bumgarner's case, it was heard by district judge. We have not gotten a written ruling back yet, so we're still waiting for that answer back, okay?
Do we know which district judge? Is one of them just resigned today?
It was Olson.
Okay.
No, it was here. Yeah, that case was handled on this one.
Okay, good.
City Attorney Civil, Jeff, you got anything for us?
I do not. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you fine, yep.
Super. I don't have anything specific yet, just sort of getting up to speed and having helped the mayor with a couple, you know, some notice letters to citizens on, on municipal ordinance type things, and then, you know, try and get up to speed a little bit more by next month and have you guys a better sense of sort of what the civil, civil picture is for the city from a department report standpoint.
You'll be up here this week, Jeff, if somebody needs you?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff?
Nope.
Public Works, as you can see on the, on the screen in front of you, the inflight love flows are running lower than previously experienced, and Mike says, and it's an indication that we're making progress on our different projects. The F1 samples are all acceptable to the parties that require them and monitor them. They're continuing to video lines to look for issues and problems. We have repaired several mainline issues in the last 30 days, and 50% of last year's sludge accumulations have been processed out and taken care of. Mike, Jody and I had a conference call with DEQ yesterday just to follow up on some stuff from their meeting with us in January, and they're very pleased with what's going on. They're very pleased with the amount of information and the openness at which we provide them, our data, and if we have a problem, they're included in any of our correspondence with the other state agencies. So that was a very good meeting yesterday. On the water delivery side of the house, the percentage of water is down 10% from our last report, and when people, you talk about down from 75% loss to 65% loss, I'll take it. I'll take that every day of the week. We're making progress, that's what it's telling me. We're 65 to 55%, and we have literally been out on service lines and repair lines and leaks and things like that, and we'll be assisting later in the week with two more if I'm not, I believe Mike said we'll get two more done this week, and if we could ship 10% off a month, I'd be a very happy camper.
Well, and as, as we lose less, that 10% might drop more because as more lines get pressurized, I think those older lines, we're going to start to see more problems with them, just.
And that's.
Yep.
The groundwater issues seem to be holding their own, you know, you can see on here where we're at on groundwater. Didn't get that table put in here, I don't believe. Groundwater seems to be holding its own and not rising. We're still not hearing any people complain about water in the basement or anything like that. Street side, there's, grind is on, and it's literally a grind. Maps in there, you guys, they've got a couple, I think there are seven sections, Mel, and three sections pending. We will then chip seal those 10 sections with gravel and get those taken care of. They're continuing to do gravel and alleys, gravel in the alleys and getting them taken care of as we get, as it works into the schedule following the JKL project as well. Project Pothole is an ongoing process, and they continue to do that at every chance we get. If you run across a large pothole, please reach out and let us know and we can get that on the list, or if it's bad, we'll get on it right away. Street sweeping, I get a lot of questions about street sweeping. People want to have a schedule for us to street sweep and things along those lines. We've been finding that it's better for us to sweep the streets in the mornings when we get, when we have rain. Get a little moisture from Mother Nature to help us out. I can take it to being a one-person job with one person in the sweeper rather than a two-person job with one in a water truck and one with a sweeper. So from a efficiency standpoint, when Mother Nature gives us the opportunity, we will be out there in the street sweeper. Parks, Larry and Greg are out there taking care of our city projects, city parks, keeping them trimmed up and taken care of. And people have been very complimentary of those guys and the, and the work they've been doing throughout Shawto and our different properties.
And Larry, is Larry back?
Yes, Larry's back.
Good.
The normal day-to-day routine, water shut-offs, meters, meter repairs, water sampling by both, for both the wastewater and the delivery system continue for our requirements, as do our garbage stuff, trees, sidewalk issues. We've received, as the weather warms up and construction's picking up, we receive a lot of line location calls a day, a lot of faxes. And so we have those, we have to get out there and get taken care of as well. So from Mike's standpoint, that's where they're at. I believe tomorrow they're going to be working over, continuing to do what they've been doing for the time being. I know that he's got a couple lines they're talking about working on later in the week, but I don't know where they're at with the contractors on that one. Jody's online and her.
Before we move on, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I have a quick question on the cardboard recycling. Can you walk us through a little bit? Like, how did we get it back? What was the process? I know it's kind of nitty gritty, but those of us who are curious.
Mike got a phone call on Friday from Steel etcetera saying, "We will start taking your cardboard effective Monday." They had came up and hauled a couple of bundles that we had over there. They would prefer the brown corrugated cardboard. They will take any of our cardboard products that they can at this time. If the pricing improves on other products, they will start allowing us to recycle that other stuff, but for the time being, it's just going to be cardboard, which is still, I can't believe, you know, the number of people that have reached out or I've seen uptown that have thanked us for being able to take cardboard.
I mean, I'll tell you what, I'm one of them. I do enough shipping and, you know, supplies ordering and everything else that, I mean, it piles up. I want to burn it, but I'd rather recycle it.
Oh, yeah, they wanted to get another garbage can until we reminded them we were taking cardboard again, and she says, "Back that up. I can take care of it through the recycling program." So, no, we're very pleased with that, and I'm glad that Steel etcetera reached out to us to do that. You know, we've, the Senior Citizen Center and some of the other businesses were very, very appreciative of that. Or from City Hall, from Jody's standpoint, 2020 budget amendments will be, need to be done. We have the Emergency Disaster Fund from the storm in September. Streetlights, software support, new PER and the purchase of the mini excavator, those are are some budget amendments that we need to wrap up to close out the fiscal year for 2020. Our new budget is in process and we're being conservative. That would be our best bet. I don't want to say we're being extremely conservative, but we're being, we're playing it pretty close to the vestas. We're not sure what we'll have for tax dollars coming in. Or we should have a preliminary budget at the August 18th meeting, and hopefully have final passage of it by September 1st. We're expecting the state to have our taxable value to us here shortly, so we can get that underway as well, and that'll give us a better idea as well, so. That being said, let's move on to our council members if there's no other questions. Who wants to lead us off? Councilman Merja?
Well, I've got a few things. Um, I am reaching out, finding out what, what's out there for skate park funding, and I'm doing that so that I can come to the city and just say, "Hey, this is what's available. Is this something we want to do?" I'm not making any commitments or anything like that, but I've been asked several times in the last 10 years to look into it, and so I'm looking into it again because I was asked again. So, yeah, that's the first thing. The next thing is maybe, and maybe this is a question for Jeff, actually. Trees in the state highway right of way. Is that kind of like being in our boulevard, except they've got to talk to the state before they do anything with it?
Um, yeah, Councilman Merja, that was my understanding and recollection that almost anything that even got close to an MDT right of way, you know, absolutely required engagement with MDT, and it was really in those, only in those circumstances where they would kind of come back and say, "Well, that's, that's up to the city." Would the municipality have to get involved? If there's, if there's something going on, I mean, anywhere close to an MDT right of way, I think that's the, we need to start that conversation, or someone would need to start that conversation with MDT first before we would be able to get in there very far.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to put it out to the brain trust that I was meeting with tonight, so. Next thing, there are still a couple of state grants out there, but most of them are being closed. I know that we got a few awarded in the city and in the area, which is awesome. I'm glad our businesses are going to stay open, and then, yeah, that's what I've got tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Merja. On the trees, if there's ones that you have specifics for, I would tell you, get them to Mike or get them to me. Our relationship with MDT has grown, I mean, extensively, and they're so easy to get along with, so easy to communicate with, and I think if there's a problem, Councilor, we could get that taken care of.
Okay.
Councilman D, let's work your side of town.
Very scrambling to find the mute button. So I announced earlier, I guess last week, the Shoto Chamber got one of the grants that Councilman Merja was talking about, and we're very pleased for that. It'll help with our fireworks fund and with some of the revenue that we lost due to 4th of July kind of being shut down this year. On the note of fireworks fund, there's still a pretty significant need because we didn't have the fundraiser, the beginning of, you know, in the spring, and 4th of July is a big fundraising time for us. So if you have the ability, please consider making a donation to the fireworks fund. You can head to shotofireworks.org to do that. The other thing that I wanted to address or bring up, it's more of a general request to the community than it is specifically for the council.
I've noticed an uptick in litter in town. And, you know, maybe it's because I'm, you know, my wife and I are walking more because we're homebound or, or, you know, stay at home and, and using walk to the mailbox as a means of getting out and about and stretching our legs. But I've noticed just around town that there seems to be more litter in yards and the boulevard, in the, in the gutters and the alleys. So I've taken, every time I'm out for a walk, I pick up a piece of litter or two and just take it to the nearest garbage and I would ask that the community do the same thing. I think it'll help us improve the community. It's a small, easy impact. You don't have to do anything. Don't touch needles. Don't touch anything that'll be gross. Call someone if you need help, but if you see, you know, candy wrappers, garbage that got loose in the wind, something like that, please lend a hand and help clean up the community.
Anything else? Nope. I'll point that out too on our posts, on our day-to-day posts as well about that. Councilman Howard?
Um, yeah, are we kind of over our time where we can't work on Spring Creek? Is our permit becoming active again on that?
Our permit is active and pending what's taking place with a couple of lines in the water, you know, line replacements or support for you guys doing sort of water lines will be in the water.
Okay, and then do we have any update on replacing the bridge down by the weather beater?
The last conversation Mike and I had, there was an engineer from DNRC who wanted us to have a complete floodplain study prior to us doing any work on that on the, on a potential bridge. And that floodplain study would cost us twelve to seventeen thousand dollars. It's our hope that DNRC is blowing Spring Creek to do their LiDAR updates for their floodplain and once that data is updated and uploaded to the state library, we can go get that data and kind of do our own in-house type thing before we have to take it out to somebody to do and in an effort to try and save some money.
Okay, and then I've had a question from resident ordinances online. They say they used to be able to go find our city ordinances online. They're, they're not able to do that right now? Or they're just a new site or someone like me that probably just can't figure it out, but.
Yeah, show to MT.org and it's right there. It'll click ordinances. It will take you away from our website. Excuse me, to a Sterling codifiers page, but it says Shoto right there and you can reprint. It's very user friendly.
Okay.
If the mayor can figure it out, I'm hoping everybody in Shoto can.
One, one quick thing on that. Don't use the back button because it'll take you back to the show to MT.org. Go back to the top of the menu and navigate from there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll pass that on.
And if they have questions, have them call me. I'll do a tutorial with them.
Cool.
Okay, then I just noticed a lot of kids are, are using Spring Creek and fishing and I think that's just a great sight to see again and I think cleaning that creek up is kind of enticed all those young kids to get down there and do that. And then with that being said, with all those youngsters down there working, I like to see a little bit better cleanup just for this, for their safety.
Yes.
Still some kind of some limbs or some of those kids are pretty small. It could get swept underneath or something.
Yes, and I, Mike, Mike's walked his, has done his walk and they're ready to go. Like I said, they're just waiting for
Yeah.
Do, doing water lines tomorrow, in the creek tomorrow.
I'd also just like to invite the public to come out and help whenever they can and do the same too. Maybe if they leave stuff out on the banks or in garbage bags, then maybe the city can just pick it up from there.
I agree. And yes, I would make, even if I had to go do it myself, I would get that taken care of.
That's all I have.
Councilman Major?
Oh, yeah, I think the only thing I was, I've mulled this over for like a month or two about the trying to, to clean up some of the, the lots in Shoto. And I think the most effective way for me to move forward is gonna be if I could get people that were interested. And I've had a few people reach out to me and I was gonna go one-on-one to them. But people that were interested, get me a written statement on some of their thoughts. I was gonna put together something that would be in line with our insurance and our attorney and that kind of stuff that and I would bring it to the council and present it that way. I think that's gonna be more effective than a subcommittee that just sort of drags out a bureaucracy and makes it bigger. I'd rather just streamline it and bring it to the council and then see where we go from there.
I like that idea, Councilman.
And for that's all I have. Any questions on any of that?
Nope. From the mayor, we've been getting dog complaints and we've been dealing with them on a pretty regular basis. We've had nothing escalate too bad lately. I have one I have to deal with, but I, I played phone tag and knocked on doors, but it been avoided, but I'll get it, I'll get that one tracked down. Similarly speaking to dogs, cats, chickens, cows, any other animal within the city that's allowable by ordinance has to be maintained on your property. Getting to people calling about other people's chickens in their yard, scratching their vehicles, things along those lines. We've got to get that taken care of and Jody and the staff at City Office, I'll be reaching out to some folks. We did take care of a couple of lots that had to be mowed today. Up, one up in Country Club Edition and two over on the southwest side of town. Those will be built out to the landowners, taken care of as well. Trees are always an issue. We've been out dealing with trees, tree limbs, things like that in the boulevard, working with our local tree trimmers here in Shoto and in Fairfield to work with the public to get those taken care of. We're, Montana Department of Transportation called this morning and told us that we are set to get our crosswalk the intersection of First Street and First Avenue at the swimming pool.
Awesome. Thank you.
Parts, the tennis courts, basketball courts there. They were actually over there today. I saw that looking and measuring stuff. I wasn't expecting that till August. Along those lines, MDT asked me today to send a letter requesting some additional ADA work and some drainage work on US two eighty-seven from where it enters the city limits of Shoto to the junction of US eighty-nine as they have some staff and dollars available to do some of those things. The Great Falls Section boss reached out this morning to tell me about the crosswalk and asked for a letter, which went out today as well. Where doors are open at City Hall, you can come in if you'd like. Most people are enjoying the walk-up window as best they possibly can. We do get a little, some phone calls and stuff. Monday will be an interesting day because we read meters on Friday, so everyone will get their bills on Saturday and we'll see how many people come in or how many people continue to use the Dropbox, use the walk-up window. Again, I can't say enough for the guys that have been working outside and the, and the guys and gals and in, in the office. It's been an up and down year would be, you know, an understatement, but everybody's rang the bell and answered the call. And from a city servant standpoint, that's all we can do is make sure that we answer the call. I was nine o'clock last night before I got my last phone call made to a local person who needed or had requested a phone call during the day, but we'll get to them. I have gone to forwarding the city office phones to my cell phone on the weekends when I'm home. So that sums up. People can call City Hall and it'll ring through to me. That way I can get ahold of the people that are on call quicker. I promise to do that until hunting season, excuse me. Then we'll see what happens comes Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday isn't unseasoned, but other than that, doors are open, business is open. Let the folks know masks, we're under zero, you know, we have two active cases right now, I believe by midweek. Thursday, the latest, I think they will all drop off. I did get a phone call from the state of Montana COVID nineteen Joint Information Center this morning to let me know that they are working as fast as they can to get our information updated on the, on the maps. They knew that their map was lagging behind what was going on and as we all did, because we were seeing people we knew who had been confirmed out walking around the streets, yet it still showed fifteen active cases. And they said that they're working, working better with their IT folks to get that stuff updated as quickly as possible. Everybody at State was very, very helpful when it came down to that.
Chris, I, I think as of today, the state active cases map shows zero for Teton County.
Cool.
Yep, it does.
Go ahead, story.
I said, yep, it does.
Okay, going north to Ponray County, they have five active cases now, so they do have a mask requirement north, south and west of us. East, I think Shoto County is one of the five or six counties that still has none confirmed, has no confirmed cases, so. That being said, we will meet again four, or eight four, six thirty by Zoom and I would entertain a motion to dismiss if there's nobody out there with public comment. Lonnie Lewis, Lewis's Mel?
Motion to adjourn.
From Councilman Merja. For a second.
I think both, both of Steve's have, have seconded.
I have a motion from Councilman Merja, a second from Councilman Howard. We are adjourned. We will see you guys on four or eight four. Buzz if you need. Thanks all. Thanks, Jeff.